All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting of our City Council, Temple City, of May 21st, 2024. Call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if we could have a roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Chen?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Here.
Mayor Chavez?
Here. Okay, just in time. Don't even sit down. We're pleased to have with us this evening Pastor Keltie from Community Christ Church, who will lead us in the invocation this evening, and he just walked in, so perfect timing. And if you please will remain standing after the invocation, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you all please rise.
O divine Creator, we thank you that we were able to be together this evening to conduct the business of this, the city of Temple City. We do so in order that we might provide direction to this community, so that they might become an even better community than they already are. We know that this will not be an easy task, when one considers all of the problems and difficulties that we face. It's for this reason we are asking for your divine support and guidance. We offer this prayer to you this evening, that we, that may we, Creator God, may see the world around us and its community, in particular, as your divine creations, and we are its caregivers. Therefore, let this be our prayer to you this evening, that through what we do here tonight, tomorrow, and the following day, and the day after that, we tap into your direction and wisdom, you might lead this community a better community in what we found. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Keltie. Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite one of our youth committee members, Amir King, to come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Does everyone continue? You guys are already standing. Face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amir. Okay, I guess maybe you could have stayed up there, because we are going to now start with our ceremonial matters, and we're going to have an update, an end-of-the-year update from our youth committee. We have several members here this evening, so I don't know who's going to go first, or I'll turn it over to you. Sarah, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Chavez and members of the council. My name is Sarah Quo, and alongside me are the rest of the youth committee members. Tonight, we will be summarizing the activities of the youth committee year for 2023 to 2024. Our objective this year was to promote the city's history and public safety and emergency preparedness. In line with our objective of public safety, the youth committee, accompanied by Mayor Chavez, had the opportunity to tour Temple Station, and were able to see the inner workings of the station. We got a behind-the-scenes look at the work and coordination that it took to keep the station running. We saw how calls were taken, and how the appropriate responses were directed. I was impressed by the amount of teamwork and attention to detail that was displayed, and am thankful to Deputy Bowie and the rest of the team for all the time and the effort that they took to take and respond to all our questions, and just give us a detailed tour of the behind-the-scenes.
Good evening, City Council and guests. I want to provide some updates on two more events, the first being the Neighborhood Watch. We've attended many meetings of the Neighborhood Watch this year, and we think that the main purpose of these is really to foster a sense of community safety, and to also understand emergency preparedness and safety. So we think that this really helped us foster relationships with our special deputies, as well as understand more about things like CPR, and fire response, and such things, and car theft. Our takeaways from this are that engagement and involvement on an individual level for safety is important to collective community, and to ensure that the city is completely safe. And second of all, for city commissions, we've also been able to understand the inner workings of city council, and the local government process, through the Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, and Transportation and Safety. We think that this was a great way to show what people in the community are really concerned about, and showed us that there's so many little things that go into keeping the city functioning and the government running. So we're really grateful to have all these experiences, and to have these takeaways from this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amir, and I'm reporting on the Centennial Parade. We learned that Temple City turned 100 this past year. Although not its incorporation, we were enthusiastic to celebrate Temple City's 100th birthday as a community, and one we are immensely proud to be a part of. From the festive celebrations to the parade, so many aspects of our community came together, including our Women's Club, Historical Society, Performing Arts Groups, the city of Temple City, and more, merged with the typical fall festival, from pie tasting contests, the car show, to dress-up days. We were reminded of, we were reminded of weirdly, the Camellia Festival, where we really celebrate the youth of our city, and I think at the point of it is just the small, tight-knit community that we have together, the ability to attend a festival and see all these familiar faces, from former teachers, to classmates, to parents and neighbors. And so, as the youth committee, we were just incredibly honored to be a part of the celebration, to be included, to be highlighted, and also to see a lot of the collaboration that took work. I mean, we heard from a lot of our representatives, the federal and state level, including also Supervisor Catherine Barker. I know she, I remember her talking about the collaboration it took to bring to Temple City the library, and the continued investment that we have from our partners, local and abroad, and so, yeah. 100th birthday for Temple City, and looking forward to many more years to come.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here to update on two of our events this year, at the Lights on Temple City Festival and the Camellia Festival. So at these two events, the Temple City Youth Committee held a booth to spread our initiatives of the city's history and safety preparedness to the public. And so at Lights on Temple City Festival, our booth was centered around the city's history in parks. So we showed our Live Oak Park renovations, which feature the futuristic moon and space theme, and how long those renovations would take, what students and children and parents would be able to see out of that, and also our Temple City Park, which is currently undergoing the construction already, and its bamboo theme. And then also, the city's Last Tunis renovation, streetscape renovation, that includes changing all of our benches, all of our lampposts, from green to black, to create a more modern feel, and then also adding a lot of road signs, and a lot of street signs. And so this booth was mainly focused on children and their parents, who would be able to enjoy these parks at their leisure. And at Camellia, our audience was also primarily children and their parents, and so our theme for the Camellia Festival was safety preparedness. And so, we taught these children the emergency supplies they would keep in their backpacks, such as food, water, batteries, health supplies, a lot of these things that you might not think are necessary, but it is very important to keep, especially since we live in a very earthquake-prone area. And as a committee, we believe that it's very important to instill these bits of knowledge in children beforehand, so that they can grow with this knowledge and preparedness in the future. And so some of our activities included a wheel spin to test their knowledge, we gave away first aid kits, and then we also promoted our campaigns and programs, such as Neighborhood Watch and Alert TC. So through these events, we were able to promote to the public our initiatives, and really just spread the security and the commitment that Temple City is.
Good evening, City Council. On the behalf of the entire youth committee involved in our public safety initiative, I want to extend our heartfelt gratitude for your unwavering support. With your support, we are empowered to continue our efforts in making our neighborhoods safer and more secure for everyone. Your commitment to prioritizing the safety of our community is truly commendable, and your endorsement of our initiative means the world to us. Thank you once again for standing behind us, and for recognizing the importance of youth involvement in creating a safer environment for the community. We look forward to continuing our partnership for the city council, sorry, with the city council, as we work together towards a safer future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you, youth committee members. Do any of the council have any questions for, nothing? You guys are getting off easy tonight, I think. You know, before they leave, and before we go to our next item, I just want to remind those in our audience, I see some young boys and girls in our audience, as you get a little older, and especially as you think about entering high school, keep in mind that we do have a youth committee, as you can see, in the city, and they basically will look at policy issues concerning the youth of our community, and make recommendations to our city council. So if anybody's interested to see how local government works, keep that in mind, and we'd love to have you, so, good advertisement.
How many seniors do we have?
We have six seniors this year, I believe.
Oh, so impressive.
Yes, so if you know anyone that would like to apply for next year, we're taking applications now, I believe, so we have six spots to fill. And so, it's usually pretty competitive to get on the youth committee, there's no question about it. I kind of be a little bit biased, but we have some of the best high school students on our youth committee, I think, and, you know, they're coming up on the end of their year, they've done a great job, and we're going to have some end-of-the-year things going on as well, with their meetings as well. So, good job, and thank you very much for coming this evening. It's always nice to hear from you, so, appreciate it. Okay. Peggy, did you want to say anything? No?
Just that application is due May 31st.
May 31st, okay. Get the word out. Any of you know any, you have to be, I think, going into the ninth grade, I believe, correct? Yes. You have to at least be in the eighth going into the ninth grade for next year, so, thank you. Okay, well, thank you, guys, and we will now move on to Item B, the recognition of Emperor Elementary School Parent Teacher Association, otherwise known as the PTA. Yay, all right. You know, before we get to the introductions and the recognition or certificates, I think we all recognize it, how difficult it is in today's world to raise funds, especially for nonprofit organizations, schools. It's just, you know, no matter what the cause is, worthy cause, whatever, it's just difficult these days. And so tonight, we are here to recognize some individuals who kind of basically went above and beyond the call of duty. And those are our representatives from the Emperor PTA. They were successful in raising, I believe it's $50,000 this year, maybe more, I don't know, but that's the figure, what, 55?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine thousand, even better. Okay. You know, just a little bit of a background, they determined that their past fundraisers were good, and they were successful, but they found that most of the money was going to their vendors, and people who were kind of setting these things up for them. So they took it upon themselves to do a lot of the work themselves, get everything done, and were able to basically double the amount of money that they were able to make. So congratulations for doing that, and, you know, it's a great, great honor to have you here tonight. And so in recognition of all your dedication and support, not only of Emperor School, but of course, the Temple City School District, we want to thank you, and of course, recognize you tonight. I know Councilmember Chen's son attends Emperor School, and I asked him before the meeting if he'd like to say a few words as well, so Ed, would you, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mayor Chavez, for recognizing the Emperor PTA, and as a proud parent of an Emperor Eagle, I see the work of the PTA every day, well, every week, when my son brings the Eagle folder home. The PTA also puts together a lot of movie nights, really engaging the families and the communities, just really wonderful, all the things that they do. So this is a very, this is no small feat to really organize and to put together such a great fundraiser, so again, thank you, Mayor Chavez, for recognizing their incredible accomplishment.
You're very welcome. It's very well deserved. And I would be remiss in not mentioning that Myra Rudell, our principal at Emperor, is here with us this evening. I'm sure she will put the money to good use, right? Okay, well, let's see, we've got a lot of presentations to make, so I'm trying to figure out how the best to do this. So what I think I'm going to do is I'm going to go up to the podium there with the certificate of recognition, and ask my council members, fellow council members, to join me, and we'll present them. So as you hear your name called, if you want to come up, and we'll present the certificate, let me just kind of briefly read what the certificate says, so you all kind of know what they're doing, or what they're getting into. So it says, "In recognition of your dedication and support in enhancing the educational experience of Emperor Elementary School students, your efforts and commitment to fostering a vibrant and inclusive school community is greatly appreciated. Thank you for making a lasting impact on students' education and well-being." And so, congratulations. Not only, I'm sure, that the school district recognizes you, but we're very grateful from the city as well, because your students are our students, and we've always felt that way, and we're very appreciative of all you do. So if I can have my fellow council members join me up to the podium, and we'll start So we'll start, first of all, with our PTA President, Amanda Robla. Yeah, thank you. I know, I did, I've been practicing all day. So I forgot to mention, when you get your certificate, let's stand up in the front, because we'll get a group picture as well, so, all right? Okay. Next, we have our PTA First Vice President, Program Vice President, Jen Luna Nguyen. Next, we have our PTA and Vice President of Budget and Finance, and I believe was the Chair of the fundraising event, Sophie Ly, Sophie. And I understand she's an attorney as well, so of course, right? Okay, next, we have PTA Third Vice President, Room Representative, Mabel Yu. Mabel, is Mabel here? No? All right, we'll take that. Okay. And we've got Fourth Vice President of Membership, PTA Lauren Johnston. PTA Fifth Vice President of Hospitality, Cindy Jerk.
Yeah.
Cindy here? No? All right. Cindy couldn't be with us this morning. Okay, then we have our PTA Sixth Vice President, Health and Welfare, Vesna Paulsen. Our PTA Secretary, Louise Castro. Our PTA Treasurer, Carol Wang. Our PTA Auditor, Joanne Zoo. Our PTA Historian, Phoebe Thay. Is there anybody from Emperor that we haven't already announced? No, I'm just kidding. We have a couple more. PTA Parliamentarian, Kristin Castro. PTA Chair of Reflections, Angela Vog. I think that's it. I think that's it, right? We've got everybody? Okay. Myra, why don't you come on up, we'll take a picture. All right, Myra Rudell. So Jerry's not here this evening to help us.
I'm here, I'm here.
So wait a minute, we want to get in a picture.
Well, you've got to get in.
All right, so let's kind of have you guys move up, so you guys are the, and then we'll get the back, okay? All right. Myra, you've got to get in the front too, so. All right, so we'll get in, we'll get in between you guys.
Everyone make sure they're in the clean seats.
Yeah, hold your certificates out.
We're waiting for Councilmember H. to come.
Come on, Ed. You don't get aside, maybe.
No problem, Ed, no problem.
All right. All right. We got it? Thanks, guys. Good job.
You know, Councilmember Chen told me he went to the Emperor Breakfast Club. He did not tell me that it was all women.
Or you would have gone. All right, we'll give you guys a few minutes to get up and go. No, I'm just kidding. They have to get home and do their homework, I know, right? Okay. Well, thank you for coming again, and we appreciate your time. And thank you for the Caesar Chavez Day, too, that was great. Okay, it's very quiet in here now, everybody left, huh? Thank you for staying, Pastor Keltie. Becky, thanks for staying. Okay. All right, we will now move on to Item Six, Public Comments on Items Not Listed on the Agenda. I do have a couple of speaker request forms. We'll start with Jing Li from our library. Come on up, Jing.
Good evening, Mayor Chavez and the City Council. This is Jeanne from Temple City Library. I'm here to talk about our upcoming programs. Once again, this year, Temple City is launching the library site, so from June 18th to Ochs Line, Tuesday to Friday, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m., we have a free lunch for children and teens 18 and under. And we are going to launch our annual summer Discover program on June 1st. This program is for people of all ages, and this program will end on August 17th. So how it works, so basically, you register online, you lock the book you read, or you record the activity completed, you come to the library to get your incentives, and also we have, at the end of summer, we have the prize drawing as well. We give out a gift card for this. So we encourage all the, the whole family to participate, and during summer, also have many in-person programs for babies, and school-aged children, and adults, teens. So the one coming up soon is going to be happening on Saturday, June 8th, at 3:00 p.m. It's an arty loo variety show, that's for school-aged kids and their caregiver. So we have magic, comedy, puppetry, juggler, so a lot of fun. And also, we started offering hotspot loon in the library, so you can check out a portable hotspot, and to connect to the internet where you go. So you can keep it for six weeks. Actually, I'm using one of them, it's very convenient, so instead of use your data, you can just use a hotspot loon if you are in the park, or, you know, somewhere else. And also, as a reminder, the public can get the free COVID-19 test kit, and the free dose of lacan, at the library, free of charge as well. That's a partnership with County Department of Public Health, and also California Department of Healthcare Service, so that's a free service we offer in the library. For more information, please visit our website, which is lacountylibrary.org, or you can feel free to give us a call at 626-285-2136. And I, we have the bookmark printed out for the bookmark contest, I left a pocket with the packet. Yeah, so we actually got one winner from Temple City, but I think she goes to school as a guy, I believe, but, because the 5th district, so at least under Temple City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I do have a speaker request form from Emily and Andrea. You want to come on up? Who's going to speak first?
I'm Andrea, I'm going to speak on behalf of Emily.
Okay.
Okay. So, good evening, Mayor and council members. My friend Emily, she's been living in Temple City for over 21 years. She loves living in Temple City, she loves her neighborhood, she loves taking walks, but most recently, in the past maybe two years, she's been seeing more and more coyotes. In Temple City specifically, the coyotes show up more frequently, they're more aggressive, and they're not afraid of humans. They jump over her walls in her backyard, and they're not even scared when you show up. Even though she follows protocol to keep them away, they still keep coming back. She's, she feels threatened to go in her backyard, she can't enjoy her backyard. Most recently, they killed her neighbor's cat. She, she understands that there is protocols, and you've done some things to prevent this, but she just wishes there's something more that can be done. She's, she's really concerned. Thank you for your time.
Can I ask you what part of the city that she lives in?
Sultana Avenue.
Sultana and what?
Sultana and Broadway, and Cameron, Roseme.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
When you say "they," does that mean a number of coyotes?
Yes, I seen, yeah, I seen coyote many times now, on the street, like body parts of that animal on the street, and it made me feel very sad and depressed. So I wish the city can do something about it, maybe remove them as frequently as possible, or, and.
Yeah, you know, it's, no question, it's an ongoing problem, and there are things that, as you said, we've tried to do, and I'll ask that our city manager gets maybe some more information from you, and we'll see what we can do, and maybe look out there a little bit more, and it's funny, you know, I guess it depends on where you live in the city, because I've been noticing less coyotes and more skunks, so I don't know if one goes with the other, but, yeah, it's interesting, but, you know, it is wildlife, and, you know, we'll do what we can, so, all right? Thank you for bringing it to our attention, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you. If you don't mind, our city manager will get some more information from you. Okay. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak at this time? If not, I will close public comments, and we will now move on to Item Seven, our Consent Calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended, unless removed for further discussion. If members of the City Council or persons in the audience wish to discuss any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull Item 7C. It's a former employer, and having attended the most recent ethics training, I feel inappropriate that I wait the one year, and.
Okay. All right, so we'll pull Item 7C, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And why don't we, before we get to that point, we'll make, we'll have a motion on the ballot, unless there's any, anyone else would like to pull any items from the consent calendar? Can we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar without Item 7C.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we're going to have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem U?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Okay, well, we'll now address Item 7C. Councilmember Chen, if you don't mind excusing yourself for a brief moment, and we'll give you a call back when we need you. and we'll give you a call back when we need you. Okay. Now that Councilmember Chen has left the room, is there any discussion on item 7C? No discussion, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve item 7C, consideration of annual rate adjustment requested by Athens Air Services.
Okay. I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. If we could, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Man?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Chavez?
Yes. Thank you. And Becky, thank you for coming this evening. You didn't have to say anything, see? Everything's good. All right. Thank you for all that you do as well.
When did you get there?
Yeah, she's been here. She's hiding in the audience.
I didn't see you.
We just saw her down at Contract Cities, so...
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Councilmember Chen is back, and we are ready now to move on to item number eight, public hearing. There is none. Number nine, unfinished business, there is none. Item 10, new business, none. Item 11, update from our city manager. Mr. Cook?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. As you know, we are members of the CJPIA, as the Mayor Chavez is one of the executive board members as well. Burke Williams Sorensen provides also legal advice to CJPIA, and I participated in one of their most recent seminars that talked about design immunity and other risks in the public right of way. I can say that we do a very good job proactively of trying to prevent those types of claims, and they're shown in our claims history. And if you look at our claims historically, they are very low when it comes to trip and fall claims and everything else. But there are also places always for improvement. So one of the things we'll be coming back to is with, with our partners with the County of Los Angeles as well, we do, we do survey the city on a proactive basis, looking for trip and fall claims and everything else. We may be doing a little bit more activity in terms of finding, finding sidewalks that may meet some of the newer definitions of trip and falls as well. Burke provided, in its public information, Burke provided some very sound advice on some enhancements that cities can do to ensure, even though we have a very low claims rate, to continue that low claims rate going forward. But obviously, there are very aggressive law firms out there that actively go after trip and fall claims throughout the county and ADA claims as well. And Burke provided some very good advice to us and some things that we are going to be coming back to you with in the near future. But I have to appreciate, I have to extend a gratitude to our partners with LA County Public Works Department, who work with us diligently over the, every year, essentially surveying almost every single sidewalk in the city on a yearly basis. So appreciate their partnership as well. The playground that's right outside of City Hall here should be ready for the first concert. It is taking form and shape. By the middle part of this week, you should see, the foundation has been poured. Now you're going to see the rubberized surfacing, which has a very intricate, beautiful design to it as well, going, being laid and poured, excuse me, excuse me, over the next week or so, and ready to go. We are out to bid on the other beautiful playground that we will have at Live Oak Park. We extended the bidding process just for another week or so, and, but we anticipate a robust amount of bids, as we received on the Temple City Playground as well. So we're very excited. Lots of public works activities happening in the city right now. This week, Garibaldi, for those who live on Garibaldi, have received notices. We'll put out some social media as well. Signposts are out. We are paving Garibaldi from city limit to city limit. We've done most of the sidewalk curb and gutter repairs as well, along Garibaldi and other parts of the city. That will take about two and a half weeks to complete from city limit to city limit. But you'll be able to, the beauty of the approach that we've taken throughout the last two years is we do what's called grind and overlay. So take about a couple inches off the asphalt, make sure the foundation and the structural integrity of the base is strong enough to be able to hold about two, sometimes, in some cases, three inches of asphalt. So as we grind it, people can still drive on it. It's about a day or so where people can't drive on it. So we try to minimize the impact and disruption to the neighborhoods and the communities, and you'll have a freshly new paved road coming soon. Along those lines as well, the council at their last meeting approved several traffic studies as well, and we are utilizing our existing contractor, Onex Paving, and their subcontractors to do the improvements over the next six weeks, six to eight weeks, to do those improvements. The first one, obviously, you will see is on Garibaldi. And all the subsequent measures we're taking with the other five traffic studies. We will have two more traffic studies coming to the City Council in the next few weeks as well, with some recommendations from our traffic engineer.
I've noticed around the city, and there were a few by my, by my house, they're covering some of the sewer openings. What's going on with that?
That, the covering of sewer openings is in anticipation of the roadwork that's going to be done.
Okay.
So they're, so they're making sure when they do, when they grind down, the couple layers, a couple inches of the existing asphalt, none of it gets into the storm drain system.
Okay. Okay, that's what I figured, but I've seen them throughout the city.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, City Attorney Gutierrez, any, any update?
No update. It's just always a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Well, it's a pleasure to have you. Thank you. Okay. We will now move on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Does anyone have any meetings while we were, since last time? No, I don't think we've had any. We're, we're coming up on the city commissioner ad hoc. We'll be looking at that soon, since the application period is coming to a close, but probably more in the next couple of meetings on that. All right, with that, then, we will move to item 14, council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. We'll start with Councilmember Chen.
Well, I was, this past weekend, I was able to attend the California Contract Cities Association Annual Municipal Seminar. And as a new council member, I especially appreciate the opportunity. Completed my sexual harassment training, my ethics training, so got that, those training out of the way. But in attending this conference, it was a great opportunity to meet other council members, also members of Supervisor, and actually through our Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District Director, Charles Trevino. We were able to talk to Supervisor Janice Hahn on the very topical, well, item of metro public safety. So it was a very good opportunity. We talked about the impending surge that the Metro Board had authorized, but also the specifics on how that surge will, will take place. So I was able to bend the supervisor's ears a little bit, and I really appreciate that opportunity. Also want to thank my fellow council member with regards to the Metro San Gabriel Valley Service Council. I'll have more on that later in a, possibly in an agenda item. And during the Contract Cities, I also was able to talk to the traffic engineer that was, that has been working on quite a bit of our traffic studies. And it confirmed, I just had some key questions regarding how he was able to obtain the data with regards to the number of traffic collision data. And he confirmed it is through the statewide database, Witters. And I think the council has done a really great job in getting these, improving the road conditions and making it safer for everybody. And like I mentioned in a previous meeting, it will go towards improving overall road safety, but also hopefully everybody's insurance rates as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I know you've had the opportunity to attend Contract Cities in your former life, and how was it any different now that you're on the council? Was it different or the same, or how, how was it?
I think the objective is a little different. Just, I think I learned a lot from, this council is always trying to find opportunities, not just learning opportunities, but opportunities to advocate for this city, and then building relationships that will become fruitful. Also, I was able to meet the county librarian. That was a very, to know that the work that has gone behind our beautiful children's library and the, and the project that Councilmember Sternquist and this, as well as my fellow council members champion over the past years. I see these relationship buildings are very important, and I thank you all for the support.
Well, good, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Man?
Thank you, Mayor Chavez. I, too, was at the same seminar, along with, I know, several of you here as well. And what I, what I do enjoy about Contract Cities Seminar is most of their topics are relevant and pertinent to Temple City in one shape or form. And so I think the two that kind of stood out for me was I enjoyed the panel discussion featuring the sheriff, Sheriff Luna, Fire Chief Maroni, as well as the Riverside Fire Chief Weiss, I think, was his name.
Weiss.
Weiss. And I don't know why I never realized this, but when, when the Riverside Fire Chief said that his fire department also draws money from the general fund, I thought that was an interesting distinction from what Chief Maroni was saying, which is he's entirely dependent on the property tax assessment to balance his budget. So that, that was, that was very interesting to hear him talk about the challenges the fire department is facing with aging equipment. And, and the other, the other topic that was really interesting was hearing them talk about the challenges with personnel recruitment. And, and that was something that we've heard Sheriff Luna talk about a few months ago when he was the keynote speaker at the chamber event over at the Women's Club. And I think what he shared at the conference kind of echoed those same challenges that the, our sheriff's department is facing with vacancies. And it was also interesting to kind of hear some other cities, cities elected officials talk about them looking at the non-sworn kind of public safety side of staff and how that interfaces with the sworn officer side. So where, where does that synergy lie? And I know, I know here in Temple City, we have had that kind of a system in place, and we've been kind of evolving and adapting as, as the times have changed. So, so it was nice to just kind of hear that others are facing similar challenges and are kind of grappling with, with the same questions that we, we ask ourselves whenever we talk about that. And then finally, the other topic that was really intriguing to me, which kind of stemmed from one of these leadership development classes I attained, I was, I was taking through my public works county hat, was about AI and artificial intelligence. And, and what was intriguing was more, not so much the content that they presented, because I felt, that was the one part where I felt maybe I wanted more information. But at least there was some examples of like questions perhaps us as small cities should be asking and thinking about. How does that interface with our operations, our, the services that we provide to, to our constituents? Where, where are those enhancements that can be made? Because they, they talked, I think the title of that talk was, they used the term force multiplier, which is, in essence, is saying, well, how do you kind of amplify the reach and the ability of your staff to do more than what they're currently capable of doing? And I thought that was a good way of really looking at AI, not as a threat necessarily, even though there are concerns about that, right, about privacy, security, et cetera. But perhaps that's something we as a council could maybe start thinking about or asking our city manager to maybe look very broadly about, you know, what are some of the key questions we as Temple City should maybe start considering? Because AI apparently is developing really quickly. So a year from now, this conversation might, might sound very different, right? That's how, that's how rapid it's, it's been. So how do we keep up and make it a relevant part of our operations if there is a place for that? So, so that's, that's something I found very interesting from the conference. Other than that, the weather was great. People were great. Like Councilmember Chen said, it's always a nice setting to connect with other council colleagues and elected officials that you don't, we don't get to see very often. And yeah, it was a, congratulations to the Contract Cities Board for hosting yet another successful conference.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes, to report on the conference, it was very well-attended. And like my colleagues who, who did attend, I think there were a lot of takeaways and also a lot of things that we looked at and felt like these are the same things that we've been talking about for a long time, especially public safety on transportation. And I think that is definitely something that both the sheriffs, the police departments, if Metro decides to go that route to have their own, are really going to have to collaborate and work together, because it's not an easy fix. And there's no easy solution, especially with the amount of homeless people that ride public transit. I wasn't able to see the second keynote speaker, but I have the book. And I have to tell you, I, probably only on the third chapter, I fell asleep, but not because it wasn't a good book, but because I was really tired. But I, I, I think, I can't think of the author's name, but one of the things that's interesting...
The guy who wrote the book?
Yes.
Alex Boudak.
Yes. So one of the interesting things, I don't know if you've read it yet, Tom?
I started, yeah.
But is just a different viewpoint he has on leadership. And he was actually a teacher at Berkeley. And where he started his career with teaching leadership skills. And what was interesting is, I've always felt that leaders, that inherently you are a leader. There's just something about leadership that some people are leaders. Some people like to take a seat back. But his approach is more that there's leadership skills in everybody. And it's all about the mindset that you have and how you approach whatever you do, no matter what level of work you do. I mean, you can be a maintenance person, or you can be the city manager. But that same maintenance person can have just as strong leadership skills as a city manager. But it's just the mindset and how they put to use the gifts that they have with whatever they do. So I'm interested to see how the book plays out as far as, he has quite a few examples that he uses, true life examples. So it's going to be interesting to read those. But most leadership books that I've read, you know, it's like the right person on the right seat on the bus, or those type of leadership, which makes you think that inherently you're either a leader or not. But this gentleman's book is very much that there's leadership skills in everybody, and you just have to tap into them and let them thrive in the positions that they have. But so, that was, that's just my take on the book, and I, I'm sorry that I didn't get to see his presentation. The other thing I wanted to, I talked briefly to Brian about this before, but bring to council, is the idea of possibly looking into getting some charging stations on the east side of town. Because we only have the ones at our Primrose Park, and I don't know if or when the Rosemead is going to come about. And if we're not, that's just going to be Teslas. I'm not sure. Do we, do we know, Brian?
They pulled permits, and they are for Teslas.
And they are for Teslas. So maybe...
Doesn't Tesla, like, run the world now?
I think so.
Yeah. But I also thought that Teslas have agreement with other manufacturers.
Yeah, they're starting to, they're starting to do that.
The other people are switching their standards.
I think they're starting, maybe it's a software thing that you get to do?
The plug.
Oh, the plug.
The plug as well, but...
Yeah.
But Tesla will no longer sell cars, they're going to sell energy. A lot of these days, they're making money.
Right. But maybe if we could possibly just look into it. I mean, I know that, I can't think of, like, closer to the Almonte border off of Live Oak, there's quite a few businesses there. There's an auto... businesses there. There's an auto body shop. There's a couple of others that have, like, small parking lots. Maybe they'd entertain having a charger, because they actually make money from renting the space to hold the charger. So, just maybe something that we can kind of explore. And I believe there's some grant opportunities also to utilize to get some more chargers, because we're pretty limited. We have, what, four at Primrose Park?
You know, when, when you brought that up, the first thing I thought of, it's not in our city, but, you know, the bowling alley, giant parking lot on Lower Zusa. But then again, it's, you know, we, as a city...
Is that county? Is that...
No, that's, that's City of Almani.
Oh, it is City of Almani.
Yeah. But if you talk about, like, a large space where...
Right.
That's like the closest I can think of comparable to the Roseme Boulevard intersection.
Maybe we can reach out to Almani and see if maybe they'd be interested in doing something. But other than that, I just appreciate the opportunity to go. And one last thing I have to say, when, when I was on Parks and Rec Commission, and Tom, you were also, I mean, it was nineteen years of being on that commission. And one of the joys, they always invited Parks and Recreation leaders to come to Contract Cities. So, I have attended, there's only one I've missed in...
We didn't invite the leaders, the commissioners went.
The commissioners?
Yeah, yeah.
What did I say?
I thought you said the Parks and Rec leaders.
Oh, no, Parks and Rec commissioners. And so, I've only missed one in thirty-one years, which...
You get a pin for that, or?
No, you don't get a pin. But I didn't go last year. But it, it reminded me seeing Councilmember Chen and Councilmember Mann there with their kids, and how much the spouses enjoyed the time with the kids. And it, it's just a family type of conference also. So, it reminded me of when I would go way, way back when, and my kids were young. So, I very much appreciated seeing you with your families and your kids enjoying the pool while William and you were busy at work. So, it was nice.
Good.
That's it?
Thank you. Mayor Protem Yu?
Mr. Mayor, nothing to share, but thank you all for sharing about the conference.
Thank you. Yes, I was there. I was there not as, as long as my fellow council members. I was unable to attend all four days, or three days, whatever it was. You like the weather, huh? I thought it was too hot. Hundred and two is just, when you go from sixty-nine degrees and little bit of drizzle going on in Temple City to a hundred and two, it's a little bit of a difference. But, you know, most, it's funny, though. You get to those conferences, I don't know if you've noticed, it's so hot outside, but then it's freezing inside.
It was cold.
You know, it was cold inside. It's like, wait, wait a minute. But it was, it was, it seemed like a good conference overall, well-attended. I did enjoy the speakers, as all of us did. It was nice to hear from Sheriff Luna, Chief Maroni, you know, with the issues that are going on. Bottom line is, they just need some more bodies. I mean, they, they just need people who will be, be willing to serve. And, you know, that's, that's been the, the main challenge. But we'll see how that works out. But, yeah, the book, it's always nice when you have a speaker that has a book, because, you know, you can take away from it and kind of gain stuff on your own time. And, but, yeah, it was, it was good. And enjoyed seeing a lot of people that I hadn't seen for a long time. You know, it's a, it's kind of a, I don't want to say a homecoming, but it kind of in a way is, to see people that you haven't seen for a while. It's nice to see that they're still around and doing well. So, I actually, you know, was busy doing some other things as well over the weekend. Had the opportunity to go to Career Day at Cloverly and speak to five sixth-grade classes.
Wow.
I didn't realize I had five sixth-grade classes.
Wow.
I thought I was going to speak to a sixth-grade class, and it turned out to be five of them. But fortunately, I stayed in one class, and they brought them to me. So, they kind of rotated, but...
You think they could have put them in the hall and spoke to all of them together?
Yeah, you'd think so. I know, huh? Probably. But, but it was nice. They, you know, I was, what I did was, I took, I don't know if you remember the, the boards we had showing the park and the things that we were doing, and they loved it. I mean, they were so excited to see what's going on with the parks and even Las Tunas. So, I was able to share with them that. And it was interesting, you know, I wasn't sure what career they wanted me to talk about, whether it be one in politics or as an attorney. And it turns out, they were more interested in what we do as politicians than what, I think, I think being a lawyer, they were still a little young as to that concept of what lawyers do. But, but they, it was, it was a good group of people, and the staff over there, very nice. Also, kind of a fun thing, this, what's it, Tuesday? This past Sunday, I was able to attend, or was invited to attend, the Temple City High School's sixtieth reunion. They graduated in nineteen sixty-four.
Wow.
And, and so they had a, a get-together at Live Oak Park, out in the picnic area. There was probably about, I'm going to say probably about forty, forty of the class was there. I think it was, they think they said there was like three hundred in the class altogether. But forty of them were there. They had a board, unfortunately, with those who had passed away. But they all seemed in good spirits. A few of them still live in Temple City. And of course, once they found out I was there, they wanted to know when their streets were going to be paved. But, but other than that, you know, it was, it was a good group. And even one of the teachers, their English teacher was there. He was in his late nineties.
That's so cool.
And he was there to celebrate as well. So, good group. I want to thank them for, for inviting me to come and speak. And I was able to share with them a lot of the things that are going on in Temple City. And, and they were very, very appreciative of all that's been done. And they said the city looks great, the park looks great, and very, very, very positive comments. Elena Lee, Elena Lee was the principal of Temple City High School, was also there, and shared with them what's going on in the high school. So, it was, it was a good little event. So, I think that's it for me. So, with that, we will now move to item number fifteen, and we are going to recess to our successor agency, to the Temple City Community Development Agency meeting. So, I will call to order that meeting. And Madam Clerk, if we get a roll call, please?
Agency Member Chen?
Here.
Agency Member Mann?
Here.
Agency Member Sternquist?
Here.
Vice Chair Yu?
Here.
Chair Chavez?
Here. Consent calendar, can we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If we get a roll call, please?
Agency Member Chen?
Yes.
Agency Member Mann?
Yes.
Agency Member Sternquist?
Yes.
Vice Chair Yu?
Yes.
Chair Chavez?
Yes. Okay, that motion carries. We have number four, unfinished business, none. Five, new business, none. Communications, none. Is there any of you in the audience wish to make any public comments regarding the successor agency? Hearing none, I will close public comments. Is there any update from our executive director and agency council? None? All right. Then we will move on to matters from agency members. Any report from any agency members? Hearing none, we will then adjourn this meeting, and we will return to the regular city council meeting. Item number sixteen, additional public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Does anybody wish to speak at this time? Hearing none, we are done. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Have a great one.